Adrian N. Brightfalter, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Thursday, March 7, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of setting a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 tax rate in dollars.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for March 7, 2024. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Thank you. Council members Farber.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our item set for public hearing is set public hearing for proposed fiscal year 2025 tax rate in dollars and taxpayer statements.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we set the public hearing. Sorry, set the public hearing for March 25.
And receiving file and adopt resolution.
That is correct, yes.
That's a, I heard you say all those things.
Yes. Receiving file, set the, receiving file, adopt the resolution, and set the public hearing for March 25.
Second by Wethel.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sprank, second by Ms. Wethel. You would call the, no, we don't do that yet. Let's go to Mike. Make him work.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. So I am going to do a PowerPoint presentation and then we have our budget staff here and our Chief Financial Officer tonight to answer any questions anybody might have. So the, as we put together a, are putting together the budget recommendation, and reminder that first you have to set the property tax levy before you know what's asked for, which of course is absolutely backwards, but that's the state law. And so that's what you're going to be asked to do tonight. But as we put it together, as we put together, are putting together the budget recommendation and then established what we wanted to recommend for a tax levy, we focused on these five things. Of course, the City Council goals and priorities is the primary thing. And we also looked at, we had some significant needs related to capital improvements in our community, and you'll hear about some of those things, and they'll end up in this budget recommendation. We were making a strong effort to leverage federal and state grants because right now, at the federal level, there are a significant number of grants through the Biden administration to compete for. We of course, public safety and the street program. So the proposed property tax rate that we're going to ask you to adopt tonight is a quarter percent higher than the current year's property tax rate. And this gives you a more robust comparison. I just told you the change in the rate recommendation. So the property tax asking from the current year to this year would be up about 6% or $1.6 million. The impact this would have on the average residential property would be a 5% increase in their property tax payment or $40.75. The average commercial property would see over a 25% increase change in their property tax payment or about $850.63. And the average industrial property would see 3.89% increase in theirs for an average of $187.33. You'll see why there's such a difference between residential and commercial because the state does what's called a rollback where they have the ability to adjust how much of a residential property is actually subject to property tax, and they lowered the amount, the percent of a residential property that is subject to property tax, which is why you don't see that large of an increase at the residential level. So when you compare our property tax rate, there's only 11 cities in the state of Iowa with a population greater than 50,000. Now, most of these cities have not yet declared what property tax rate they're going to hold their public hearing on. But the only ones that are even close to Dubuque's property tax rate as far as how low it is, is Ames and Ankeny. And Ames has declared theirs, so we know what theirs is. And while Ankeny hasn't declared theirs, their public information would suggest that it's not going to be lower than Dubuque. So the Dubuque's property tax rate will, if you accept this recommendation, we believe, will maintain its status as the lowest property tax rate of the largest cities in the state of Iowa. The city of Waterloo, which has the highest rate, is almost 100% higher than Dubuque's rate. And the average of the other 10 cities, not including Dubuque, would be 53% higher than Dubuque's property tax rate. There's many significant issues that are impacting the budget recommendation. One of them is the increased transparency required by the new state law from last year. So there'll be information submitted to the county auditor, and there'll be a mailing to every taxpayer in town during, during this process. The March 25 will be the public hearing on the proposed property tax rate. And the meeting has to be separate from any other meeting, so it can't just be on a regularly scheduled City Council meeting. And remember, whatever rate you set tonight, you, when you have the public hearing and you actually have to adopt the rate, you can't go higher. You can go lower. So if you decide after whatever input you get or other considerations you give by the time you hold the public hearing, if you think, well, you want, you don't want it to be as high as you, as you set today. So for instance, let's say you accept the recommendation tonight to set the public hearing on the rate that I'm recommending, you still, at the public hearing, would have the option to lower it, but you can't raise it. Then the state of Iowa, I'll say, attempted to give us more time to do our process, and they said, instead of the end of March, we're going to give you until the end of April to do your budget process. Only, they only give us till April 15th if you have a debt levy. And I'll just tell you, most, well, every large city has a debt levy and lots of small cities. So the real new date is April 15th, it's not April 30th. So it is two-week extension over what it used to be. So another significant issue is, you'll remember that when the state of Iowa changed the property tax system for commercial industrial property several years ago, they said, we're going to backfill any losses that cities and counties and school districts receive from the change in the way property taxes were calculated for commercial and industrial properties. Then they changed their mind, and they said, no, we're going to take away that backfill. So when you look at fiscal year 25, our loss will be $577,000. So while it incrementally happens over time, it is that much less that we'll have than if they had continued the backfill. And this, as I said, has happened over time, so you can see that when they used to provide the backfill, it was about $1.8 million a year that the city of Dubuque received. And if you, you can see it's taken a stair step down, mostly starting in 2019. And we're in the budget year we're dealing with, and this hearing is fiscal year 2025, and you can see it's stepped way down from the highs of 2016, 2017. And it's going to continue to do that until 2030, when there'll be no backfill at all. Then also, several years ago, when the state did property tax reform, as they called it, and they made those changes to commercial industrial properties, which they backfilled the losses for a while, they also changed multi-residential properties. So that was a three flat and above. A multi-residential used to be commercial property and was taxed at the same rate as commercial property. They changed that and created this new designation, multi-residential. And they also started on an annual basis, reducing the amount of the multi-residential property that was subject to property tax. And so you can see, and by the way, did not provide any backfill payments for this. This was just an absolute loss to the city. And you can see that in the first year, the city lost, what, almost $400,000. And fiscal year 21, lost almost $1 million from that, as they kept, continued to tax less of the multi-residential property value. And in fiscal year 24, which is the year we're in today, we lost $1.2 million in revenues from what we would have received under the old property tax system for multi-residential. And they then said, okay, now we're going to eliminate multi-residential, call it residential. And remember, as I opened these remarks with, they changed the value each year of how much of the residential property is subject to property tax, and this year it went way down. So now that they eliminated multi-residential, all apartment buildings are considered just like anybody else's residence as far as taxes, which means they're subject to the rollback, which means much, much less, under 50% of their value is subject to property tax. So you can see from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 24, the city of Dubuque lost $5.6 million in property tax revenue because of this change, and now the change is permanent. So we'll just continue to not receive those dollars. The state of Iowa also increased the homestead exemption, or I'm sorry, created the homestead exemption for 65, people who are 65 years old and older. FY '24 was the first year of that. We're estimating in FY '25, it's going to cost the city $113,000 in lost property taxes. The state also increased the military credit exemption. And while they do reimburse the city, just like the homestead credit for the base value of the loss, the increased value of the loss from last year's change in the law, they don't reimburse the city. So we'll lose $77,000 in property taxes in fiscal year 25. And Jennifer, was that an accurate description? No, it wasn't. So you want to step up to the microphone and give them the accurate description?
Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer. So the state actually changed the military credit to an exemption, so they aren't actually funding it at all anymore. It will actually reduce the city's taxable value and reduce our property tax revenue by the, sorry, 70, I think it was 79, oh, it's on the screen, $76,918. And then I'm going to go back and clarify one other item on the commercial and industrial backfill. There were actually two separate items on that slide. The first slide was related to the 90% backfill, which is being phased out. The second bullet is related to the new backfill, which the state is funding. So there is actually a two-tier assessment now on commercial and industrial. The first $150,000 value of commercial and industrial uses a residential rollback, and then the state is backfilling the loss of property taxes there. So that's what the $577,000 is related to. So that's what we'll be receiving from the state for that two-tier assessment on the first $150,000 rolled back to residential.
Thanks, Jennifer. And feel free to just jump up to the microphone at any point in time when I'm stepping all So the, through the assessment process, through the city assessor, the average residential property value increased over 23%, and the average commercial property value increased 25%. Now remember, though, the average residential property tax is not increasing 23% because of the rollback factor. So the state adjusted for residential property, how much of the property value is actually subject to the tax. They reduced it to make up for, so that there wasn't this shock to residential property. And here you go, right here. So they, in the current year, almost 55% of a residential property value is taxed, and in FY '25, it'll be just over 46%. So that's how much they reduced the amount of the value of a residential unit is subject to property tax. And then Jennifer already explained that second bullet there. Thank goodness. We have other revenues besides property taxes that relate to the general fund. So we have riverfront leases. So in FY '25, we're projecting we'll get just over $4 million in riverfront leases, which is about a $212,000 increase from the current year. And that's based on the fact that all the tenants in the industrial riverfront have long-term leases, and they have cost of living increases built into the long-term leases. Local option sales tax, a tax the residents passed by referendum. We are seeing a healthy increase in revenues from the local option sales tax, and we're projecting, I would say, be a 3% increase. 50% of that goes to property tax relief, 50% goes to capital improvements, 20% for maintenance of city buildings, and 30% for street maintenance. The hotel motel tax, ever since the pandemic, has been doing very well, and we're projecting it's going to increase about 3% from the current year of almost $3 million to FY '25 to almost $3.4 million. You'll recall that in July of 2023, Moody's did a review of our bond rating, and Moody's upgraded the city's outstanding general obligation bonds from AA3 to AA2, as well as the outstanding sales tax increment revenue bonds from A2 to A1. And what they said was, notable credit factors include strong financial operations and ample revenue raising flexibility, which resulted in steadily improved available fund balances and cash. The city serves as a regional economic center, and its regional economic growth rate has outpaced the nation over the past five years. So we're not yet done putting together the capital improvement project budget, so I don't have any definite numbers to give you about that. But what I am going to do is tell you about some of the projects that are going to end up in the capital improvement budget. The mayor and city council has done a good job of managing our debt over the years. And in the current fiscal year, so there's a, there's a statutory debt limit in the state of Iowa of how much debt a local government can issue. It can't be any more than 5% of the assessed valuation of the community. And in the current year, we only use 41% of our statutory debt limit, which means there's plenty of room if there were ever to be a crisis or catastrophe or a need to issue debt, to deal with some issue, as the city of Dubuque has plenty of capacity to do that. And when you look at, remember, there's 11 cities in the state of Iowa with population greater than 50,000. So let's see how much of their statutory debt limit they use compared to the city of Dubuque. So of those 11 cities, we have the fourth lowest, I'm sorry, the fifth lowest use of statutory debt limit. And Des Moines, which is the highest one, their use is 64% higher than us, at almost 67% of their statutory debt limit. And Dubuque's is below the average of the other 10 cities. So we compare very favorably on use of debt. And reserves, we have very healthy reserves. So the mayor and city council has a goal of having 25% of general fund reserves. And you can see that in fiscal year '25, so the year we're talking about, we'd have almost 34% general fund reserves. Now then, we're, we're projecting that in the future years, it will go down closer to the 25% number. And most of that is because, A, we're implementing capital improvement projects with some, some of that money, but some of it has a deadline for expenditure because it was the federal ARPA dollars that were released during the pandemic and given to communities across the country, including us. Then Moody's, who does our bond ratings, they change the way they analyze communities' reserves, and they now not only consider your general fund reserves, but they also consider your reserves in your enterprise funds. So like sanitary sewer, storm sewer, refuse collection, water. And based on their calculations, and they use the accrual method, they say that in FY '25, we'll have 35% reserves, and that will stay above 30% after that. So that's the projection. So we'll see once we're done with the five-year CIP. So once again, in their eyes, we have very healthy reserves. One of the mayor and city council priorities was the employee retention. So one of the things I'm going to be recommending in the budget is a 5% increase, wage increase for non-bargaining unit employees. We also have five collective bargaining agreements. We have a tentative agreement with the Police Protective Association at the 5% cost. And we're still negotiating with the Dubuque Professional Firefighters and the International Union of Operating Engineers. So all three of those, their contracts expire June 30. We have two Teamster units. Their contracts don't expire till June 30 of 2025, so we're not in negotiations with them. And their contract calls for, in FY '25, a 3% wage increase. The estimated cost of these wage increases across the different non-bargaining and unions is almost $2 million to the budget. We're also going to be recommending now, in, with the materials you received, we gave you a list of all the, what's called improvement packages that departments requested. So what do they need new that's not in their budget currently? And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but these are some of the things we're going to be recommending. An additional fire captain position to serve in the capacity as a field training officer and safety officer. And the cost of that is $128,000 in FY '25. And then a new bureau chief position for the Emergency Medical Services Division, and the recurring cost of that is $164,000 a year. So when you look at all the general fund requests for improvement packages, it was $3.2 million. And we were able to identify funding for $888,000 of that. So when you see the recommended ones in that list, that's, that's the ratio. In other words, we weren't even close. We're at about, less than 25%, or about 25% of the, of the request are recommended for I mentioned that we're looking at doing some major capital improvements, even though we haven't completed the capital improvement budget yet to present to you. We will do that soon. But one of the major projects is a $47 million project for the Catfish Creek Sewer Shed Interceptor Sanitary Sewer Improvements. Includes a new lift station, new replacement of a significant amount of sewer pipe that was installed in the 1980s, and some new sewer pipe, which would get it all the way to the southwest arterial, so that would allow for the southwest arterial areas to start being redeveloped by developers. We're looking at implementing at the Water and Resource Recovery Center, a new way to handle the intake of our high-strength waste from our major industries. That's over $6 million project. We're now meeting with the industries because the fees that we charge for accepting high-strength waste will actually be what pays for these improvements. The Water and Resource Recovery Center is going to update their industrial controls for about $3 million. And they're going to do upgrades to their processing facilities for about $1.1 million. Now, this is a map that shows you what I just talked about as far as the new, the replacement sewers, the lift station, and the new sewers that are being put in along the Catfish Creek. And so the purple and the green is, well, the purple is replacement of existing sewer, and there's some new sewer there and construction of a lift station. The, the green line is a replacement of existing sewer. And then the, all the way on the left, the blue line is a new sewer, which will serve the southwest arterial corridor. So this will be, not only allow the community and developers to start redeveloping the southwest arterial, or developing the southwest arterial corridor, but it'll eliminate infiltrational and inflow problems that we have in this very, very old sewer system. And it also is undersized from what it really needs to be. And, you know, there was no way for them to know in the 1980s what kind of businesses or companies would be out here in our industrial parks providing waste, and the sizing is not correct. And the Schmidt Island, we're going to be replacing about, and putting in some new, two and a half, about $2.6 million of sanitary sewer as part of the Chaplain Schmidt Island redevelopment project. Once again, back to the southwest arterial, but now not sanitary sewer, but water main. We're going to be recommending spending $1.7 million to extend the water main, so that will also allow for development along the southwest arterial. And this is a map that shows that. It shows several other projects that aren't part of this budget. Those are the ones on the left. The one on the right, that purple line that comes up North Cascade Road and goes all the way to the southwest arterial, that's the $1.7 million project that I'm referring We also are taking advantage of a federal program being administered through the state of Iowa, where we can get a loan, which is almost 50% forgivable, and the rest is very low interest. I think it comes out to about 2.25% when you add the 4% fee that we have to pay every year, to finance the replacement of lead water service lines to individual homes. So we've never had a program like this before. We always just deal with the public water mains, but this was a chance to help people in the low-income neighborhoods replace their service line that is lead. And while having a lead service line in Dubuque is perfectly safe, because we add treatment to the water system that makes it so the lead doesn't leach into the water, the absolute preferred methodology is to just replace them. Now, unfortunately, in this program, I think we've got over 3,300 lead service lines in the city, and we're only going to be able to replace less than 1,000. I think it's about 600 in this program, based on the way the grant works. We're also, you'll remember that last year, we tested our water, and it showed that we had some PFAS contamination in our shallow wells. Remember, our water at the water plant doesn't come from the river. It comes from deep wells and shallow wells. And shallow wells are influenced by the river. And so in our shallow wells, it turned up, we had PFAS. So we've been doing our best to get our water out of our deep wells and just mix in enough water from the shallow wells that keeps us below the standard for the test. But in this, what we're talking about doing is building or digging another deep well. And so we would be able to really rely almost exclusively on our deep wells and And so we would be able to really rely almost exclusively on our deep wells, except for certain times like during the summer when there's really high usage, you know, if it's a dry summer, hot summer, or something like that. Now, one thing that's not taken into consideration in here is City Attorney Corrin Bremwell and the council approved us becoming part of a lawsuit against the companies who products use these PFAS and has created this contamination. And there has been a settlement negotiated, but there's so many cities in the class action lawsuit, it's not been determined yet how much is each city going to get. And so this could be, two things could happen here. One, this number could come down as far as how much we have to pay out of our water rates for this specific project. Or there are other things we can do from a filtration perspective that when we find out that number, we'll study that first. What should we do? Should we just do this project and pay less out of the water rates? Or should we do this project and do more? And so we have less reason to be concerned about the influence of PFAS in the future. So that'll be a decision for later. We also are doing some improvements in the third pressure zone, and that's Tanzanite Drive, which is out on Peru Road, all the way up to Olympic Heights by Highway 52. And that'll be about a $2 million project for the Water Department. I mentioned that we're going to be doing some improvements on Schmidt Island, the sanitary sewer for about $2.9 million. And we'll be using about $218,000 of ARPA funds to keep those, the impact on the rates down, the sanitary sewer rates down. And in addition, we're going to spend about $1.5 million in ARPA money to replace a sanitary sewer lift station at the end of Kerper Boulevard. And that's where the new apartment building is going, is being built. And so that's part of our development agreement with that developer is that we'll replace this pump station. It's undersized, and it's, from a timing perspective, it's ready to be replaced. But instead of putting it on the rates, we're using ARPA dollars to do that. And this is a map that shows those two things I just mentioned. So the red circle on the right is the new lift station or the replacement lift station at the end of Kerper Boulevard. And then the red lines on the left, those are the new sewers and probably an additional lift station on Chaplain Schmidt Island to support all the development, the over $80 million development that's going to happen there. Actually, it's almost $100 million in development that's going to happen there. We'll also be replacing the B Branch Gate and Pump at the 16th Street Detention Facility. That's a $28 million project, and we're leveraging an $8 million federal grant to help us pay for that. And we have another request in, and hopefully that will happen too, but that hasn't yet. So, but this one has. We also submitted a RACE grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation. The idea is to build a railroad overpass over 14th Street to improve 16th Street. I'll show you a map in a minute. And Elm Street. The total project cost is $43 million. It will, hopefully, we'll find out in a couple of months, will leverage a $25 million grant, RACE grant from the federal government. We received $9.2 million from DMATS, the local regional transportation organization. And we also have gotten support from the Dubuque Racing Association. So this is a map that shows where those improvements are. So you can see the, I don't know, was that like an aqua line, I think? There down in the lower left, that's the railroad overpass. Then you can see on the far left, running from top to bottom, that gold line with the red line on each side of it, that's Elm Street. And that will become a complete street all the way from Five Points to the Intermodal Transportation Center. So it'll include a really nice bike lane. 16th Street, which is that purple color in the middle there, running from left to right, that will receive the same treatment as Elm Street and become a complete street with bike lane. Up to Sycamore. And then you can see just north of the 16th Street Detention Facility, there's a orange line. That's the hike bike trail that already exists. And so people will be able to go off the street onto the hike bike trail. There'll be a roundabout. You can see that there in the middle at Sycamore and 16th Street. That's that circle there in the middle. That would be a roundabout. And then when you get all the way over to the right side of the drawing, there's another roundabout, and that is at Admiral Sheehy Drive and Dubuque Greyhound Drive where it enters Schmidt Island and where the Wisconsin Bridge lands, traffic lands. That would be another roundabout. And then the bridge that goes over the Piasta Channel now doesn't have a bike lane. You would be adding a hike bike lane to that. This is an artist's rendering of the railroad overpass. And this is an artist's rendering of Elm Street once it's a complete street. Also, with leveraging grants on Schmidt Island, we'll be building a $16 million outdoor amphitheater. And we were able to get a $3 million grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority to support that, and also financing from the Dubuque Racing Association to help support it. Now, this is not a city project, so you won't see it in the budget, but we're in partnership with the Iowa Department of Transportation, and we're advocating for a $17.5 million reconstruction of the intersection of the Northwest Arterial and Highway 20. Part of that reconstruction would close the south leg of that intersection so that the south part of that intersection goes into the Walmart area. That part of that intersection would close. And then it would just be a three-way intersection, be much more efficient, and there'll be substantial other improvements that will add to that efficiency. The city and DMATS are kicking in $5.5 million. And the idea is the Iowa Department of Transportation will pay the remaining $12 million. And we know in April at the IDOT meeting, the commission is going to consider whether they're going to, what their five-year plan is going to be, and does this make it in? And we're pretty optimistic. This is, well, this is a rendering of that. So you can see the south leg of the intersection is closed and a frontage road is built. You can also see that for westbound traffic on Highway 20 that wants to turn north onto the Northwest Arterial, they no longer would come up to the traffic light. It would actually be an acceleration lane where they would jump off of Highway 20 into this acceleration lane, which would take them onto the Northwest Arterial without ever arriving at the stoplight. And there's also some closures on the north side of Highway 20, west of the Northwest Arterial. So some of those businesses, car dealers who now access Highway 20, would no longer access Highway, I'm sorry, yeah, Highway 20, would no longer access Highway 20, they would have a frontage road to Old Highway Road. So the intersection would become much more efficient, much safer, and would really, we think, facilitate the movement of traffic from the northwest arterial to the southwest arterial. I mentioned that public safety is one of the important things in this budget, and we'll be spending $3 million to replace the software system that runs everything at the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the 911 Emergency Communications Center, the Dubuque County Sheriff's Department, and so on. And this is a partnership with the county. So the county will pay 1.5 million, and the city will pay 1.5 million. When you look at the investment in the Fire Department equipment and facilities, it's almost $9 million. So there'll be two new fire engines, a new ambulance, a new fire rescue boat, a replacement. And by the way, those are all replacements when I say new. So replacing two fire engines, replacing an existing ambulance, and replacing the fire rescue boat. Also be improvements to the fire burn tower. Will be, this is the almost $5 million to at some point in time build a future fire station out west. And then there'll be a major remodeling of all the stations of their bunk rooms for about $1.4 million. And I mentioned streets. Well, you've seen a lot of street projects throughout this presentation already, and some of them are mentioned here. There, of course, will be the five miles of asphalt overlay that our Public Works crews do. There'll be the 14th Street Overpass, associated roundabouts, and complete street improvements, the Northwest Arterial and Highway 20, and the Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape improvements. As the council has always made it easy on us when they adopted this statement of what are we supposed to be trying to accomplish? We're supposed to be trying to create an equitable community of choice, a high-performance organization and community that is data-driven and outcome-focused, built on the five pillars of resiliency, sustainability, transparency, equity, and compassion. And how do we do that? Through planning, partnerships, and people. And so you'll be setting the public hearing on the proposed property tax rate. And then there's going to be public meetings on the budget recommendation of March 26, March 27, March 28, April 2, April 4, April 8, and April 9. So plenty of opportunities for residents to get input. The final public hearing will be April 11. Remember, I told you the budget has to be adopted by April 15 by state law. And then here's the sites that people can go to, to provide any comment that they'd like to do. And with that, Jennifer Larson, the Chief Financial Officer, is here to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor Proton.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I thought I'd jump in early here, just give a few comments, and then obviously leave it open for any other discussion that we want to have. But first of all, I want to thank Mike as a city manager, and of course, all the staff because everybody's involved in this process. Everybody has their hand in some way in creating this budget as challenging as it really is. So thank you very much for doing all that hard work. I know that we make some tough decisions here, but the real hard work in this budget is done well before it gets to us. Well, we knew this would be a challenging budget year ahead, and we're definitely seeing that. I'm going to give my annual complaint here about the barriers that the state legislature puts in front of us. But I want to actually first talk about a little bit of the positives that are here in this budget. You know, as difficult as it is, this proposed budget really does meet some of the key demands of this next year ahead of us. First of all, I really do think it's in line with the goals and priorities that we set as a city council at the end of last year. We know how challenging that process is in setting those goals and priorities. And we were very focused this year on things like staffing, infrastructure, and some really key projects that are taking place throughout the city like Chaplain Schmidt Island, continuing to focus on Central Avenue and those types of things. I also think that this is actually very much in line with the needs of Dubuque right now. I mean, Mike, your presentation was great in showing us some of the ways in which, especially the capital improvement projects, are focused on a lot of the needs that have come up in this past year. But I really do think that this entire budget does its best to be able to focus on the needs of the community. And then finally, I think that it's in line with the trends that we're seeing across the state of Iowa. I mean, we, you know, as Mike pointed out here in the presentation, we are still the lowest property tax rate, but almost all the property tax rates throughout the state have risen for various different reasons. And that's something that I think is important that we look at as we go through this process. There are definitely some challenges and disappointments that are in this budget. And as in most years, there are many, many improvement packages that the city manager could not recommend. And as usual, each of these have been requested by city staff for very good reasons. So it's always difficult to see that number that is so large that we aren't able to recommend. But that's one of the challenges of creating a budget in the way that we need to. Here's where I'd like to mention a few of the challenges that I think have been put in our way by the state legislature. So I really think the state legislature continues to make it more difficult annually to allow cities and towns, and counties for that matter, across the state of Iowa to provide the services that Dubuques and other islands really want. And those things are pretty simple when it comes down to it. We want good roads. We want police, fire, public safety, safe, affordable housing, modern functioning infrastructure, pools, recreation opportunities, and the staffing to make each of those things possible. And I really do hope that in time, our state leaders decide to be a partner in making Dubuque a great place to live rather than putting new and creative barriers in place that make it harder to invest in the places that we call home and the people who live there and the people in places we love. Because that's really what's happening now. So I hope that we get to that point sometime. But I do continue to be frustrated by the many barriers that our state legislature puts in place in this process to make budgeting in cities like ours more difficult. Now, despite all these challenges, we continue to find ways to provide as much responsible investment in the Dubuque community as we can. And that's thanks, again, to our innovative and very talented staff. I think it's thanks to the sincere fiscal responsibility that we have shown as a city council and previous councils have shown. And it's also thanks to the millions of dollars that are coming from our federal government and that really came in a bipartisan fashion over the last few years and from the Biden administration. And then, of course, I want to give some credit where credit is due to some state agencies like Iowa Economic Development Association and the Department of Transportation and others who do provide us with some assistance. So with all that said, I really carefully reviewed everything that we're looking at tonight, and I know we all have. And I really do, at this point, support the recommendation that is before us this year. And I want to thank, again, thank the staff and everyone for their hard work on this. I think everybody has been very focused on creating an equitable, equitable community of choice, as Mike pointed out. So with that, I'll leave it open for other discussion, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who's next? Laura, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I think the mayor described the situation very well. I think the legislature has added many layers of challenge that add complication. As we try to explain the process to our citizens, the challenges that have been added really make that difficult. So I appreciate the way our city manager was able to present this overall budget to us. I support the tax rate as it is currently presented, and I'm really going to be looking forward to all of the budget presentations and focusing in. I can see that it's focusing in on the priorities that we as a council have established. And so I am in support of the tax rate that has been presented to us here. Thank you.
Ms. Farber.
Yes, I actually have a question. And I know that Jenny, you said that the, all of the CIP and all the budgets are not formalized or completed at this point. But just wanted to ask in terms of public safety, and I can't recall, as we're talking about the IT in particular, in terms of what's happening now, Chavino, the new rollout, what it was that we built into that current budget for cybersecurity and for public safety. And I bring that to our attention based on what recently just happened with some of the funding in the county kind of being lost in space, in cyberspace. So just wanted to see if I could be refreshed as to what it is that we have planned for that, and do we have ample security for that funding?
City Manager Mike Van Milligan. First of all, it wouldn't be fair or appropriate for me to comment on what happened with the county and the city of Dyersville, so I won't. But we have a very robust cybersecurity program, and we've had great success with that. But related to this budget, we're going to be moving our IT department out to the West End in a facility that we're purchasing space in, the old Medline Building, purchasing the space from Dubuque Initiatives who purchased the building. And we will have, I believe it's about a $600,000 budget to do that. So... So move our servers and all those things out of the basement of the old funeral home downtown and into a nice, new, well-protected space. We're also spending $3 million to replace all our software systems at police, fire, and 911 emergency communications, and our ambulance service. And so we believe we'll have the most modern, safe, well-protected software system that you can have. And that's, and so that'll happen over the next year. And we did add a cybersecurity position to the city budget last year. And so we have that new position to help us with all our cybersecurity issues. I don't know if Jennifer Larson, if you wanted to add anything, or City Attorney Karen Brumwell.
Okay, well.
Doesn't look like it. So unless you have any more questions about it.
No, thank you for that refreshing, refreshment, because I wasn't cognizant of all that was occurring. I just think it was important for us to have that, just to be comfortable that it was in the budget or the ongoing. So thank you very much. And I agree with everything that has been said as well tonight. And I think, Mike, your presentation was spot on and very educational for us to really understand the, the pros and cons of this budget, which I think is very prudent. I think public safety is really there for all of us to see, and I think the CIP projects are basically in line with our goals in terms of the infrastructure. So thank you very much for all of that, Jenny. Thank you for all of your work as well. And this is one of the years that I'm just going to be very pleased to support without adding additional funding as a reserve. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I just wanted to share today an article titled from the Des Moines Register and a little snippet out of it, because I think it speaks to the somewhat devastating space that we will be living in in the next few years and trying to care for our city. The article published in Des Moines Register today was "Des Moines and Other Cities Say Iowa's Tax Changes Have Left Budget Holes No Room For Growth." And the Iowa League of Cities Director, Alan Kemp, said to the Des Moines Register that cities of all sizes are reporting, quote, "a loss or limitation of revenues and revenue options," end quote. Yet cities, quote, "face the same inflammatory," I'm sorry, inflationary pressures that everyone in the economy faces." And I think that that's what we have to remember, is that we are doing our best, and I hope that citizens will recognize that we're doing our best in a setting in which all of our household costs and costs of living have gone up. The costs of running a city are going up. They're going up dramatically. They're going up regarding our own insurance, our own day-to-day operation costs. And so I intend to be very thoughtful as we move forward. I appreciate all of the city staff's hours of effort that they do as individual departments to prepare us for this. I intend to support the recommendation tonight, but I promise the taxpayers will be as thoughtful as we can. But we must all remember that as much as we want new services and new opportunities for our city, we may be in a place where we have to do less than we want to do this year. Thank you.
Ms. Sprank.
I was just going to say, echo a lot of what everyone's already said. I'm mainly thanking the city manager and staff, because it's not going to be a fun process this time, but we, our hands are sort of tied, shall we say? And this is the best we can do with what we have, so I'm, I understand what, it is what it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, I thought coming down here tonight that the appropriate thing would be to adjourn the meeting, then have the meeting, and then call it order, because of the backward nature of the rules that put us here. The citizens have every right to expect us to make informed decisions based on a lot of information. We're going to have a ton of information coming over the next eight weeks. But we don't have it yet, and we're required to set the budget number tonight without that information. And that angers me every year. I think the number that I last saw is about 80% of the people that live in Iowa live in cities. That's a big deal. So why is the 20% driving all the public policy about how cities operate? That's also a big deal, and one that I wish our lawmakers would address and pay a little bit more attention to where the people are and what the people's needs are. Because we're doing the best that we can, and we're the closest to the people of all the elected layers of government that exist. I'm real impressed with, with what's before us tonight, all of that being said. I was prepared a few weeks ago to, I was thinking how I was going to explain the need to do a six, or eight, or 10% tax increase to meet the needs and to compensate for the, for the losses coming from, from state government. And as good luck would have it, and great skill in our finance office would have it, and as I misinterpreted some of the things that they had done to us, to be worse than they were, although they're still pretty bad. This budget puts us in a pretty good place, where we can impact some public safety issues that, that need work. We're able to impact some salary issues that, that have needed work and become more and more apparent to us. We've got some of the best people in the world working for us. And you see it all the time, the presentation on, on the police annual report the other day. Talk about compassionate, caring law enforcement. It's contrast to just about everything you see on TV, and of course, that's contrasted to reality as well. So many cities don't enjoy that. So many cities won't find officers that care at all about unhoused persons, or people, people in trouble, even people who are under arrest or have substance abuse issues and are a major difficulty for, for managing. But the compassion that I see all the time from these officers, and the restraint, and their leadership in areas like understanding emotional IQ, really impresses me. I don't want those guys leaving to go somewhere else. Our firefighters are, just came through an accreditation process. I had a chance to stop at Station 5 the other day and visit with the guys a little bit and see some of the new technology firsthand, and how the, the very first chirp of the radio, they're looking up at the screen, and they know if they're going or not, and if they're going where they're going. It's mapped right on there, and there's screens all over the buildings, so wherever they're at, they can see that. So they're not even listening for the dispatch, they're reading at the same time the electronic voices. That's pretty impressive. All of the things that everybody in that department had to do to achieve accreditation, pretty amazing. Big hurdles, big, big data collection, big data understanding to get there. So we're addressing that. We're getting a little closer to where we need to be on, on wages, and that's a great thing. All in all, this is, I'm delighted to see us only at a quarter percent tax increase, tax rate increase. I know that the actual impact on citizens is a little bit higher. But please folks, understand that the same issues that are tugging at your budget tug at ours. We can't run police cars and fire trucks without fuel, and fuel costs money, costs real money. Can't light up these buildings without electricity. You want us to have quality employees, and you deserve that level of service that you get from these municipal professionals. You need them, and you need us to take care of them and do a good job with that. So we hear you. We understand that it's not easy to pay your taxes, or to buy your groceries, or to fuel your automobiles and all of that. It's not easy for us. In fact, it's a little bit harder, because infrastructure pieces for us cost more. If you, I was talking to Andy this morning about this, and he came from a medical background. A pair of scissors costs you, you know, three or four bucks at the store. But if it's a medical scissors, 15 or 20 bucks, almost the same thing, hardly any design difference, hardly any manufacturer difference. Well, golly, how many of you had to buy sewer man this year? A chunk of that costs a lot of money. How many of you had to buy a dump truck or a street sweeper? Or you just saw ambulances, are $400,000, almost a half million dollars for an ambulance. Municipal infrastructure pieces are getting really expensive. But we're going to pull it off with only a quarter of a percent increase in, in our tax rate. And I'm very proud of that, and our staff should be too. Jennifer, your, your team is amazing, second to none. So nice work. So let's, let's vote on this and adopt that tax rate and this resolution, and proudly go home.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes six to zero. No further business being on the agenda. We'll call this meeting adjourned.